Do you need a mask? Okay. Because I got one here that's like twenty-five bars.
I got one, but it's in the truck.
Yeah, I wish I had that problem.
Yeah, just checking. You may have turned yourself on there. Should be a green light.
Good afternoon. This meeting will be held with all of our council members participating in person. The public can join this meeting via Zoom. We want to allow the town clerk enough time to make sure everything is working properly, and folks are able to join the meeting. We will begin the meeting in about five minutes or so. Anyone who wishes to speak during public comment should type their name and address in the chat box, and you will be called on and unmuted when it's your turn to speak. Public comments that were submitted to the town clerk prior to the meeting will be read first. As usual, public comments will be limited no more than three minutes. Thank you for being patient with us as we adjust to hosting electronic meetings. Anyone who wishes to speak during public comment periods should type their name and address in the chat box, and you will be called on and unmuted when it's your turn to speak. Public comments that were submitted to the town clerk prior to the meeting will be read first by myself or by the mayor pro tem. As usual, public comments will be limited no more than three minutes. Thank you. Good afternoon. This meeting will be held with all of our council members participating in person. The public can join this meeting via Zoom. We want to allow the town clerk enough time to make sure everything is working properly, and folks are able to join the meeting. We will begin the meeting in about five or so minutes. Anyone who wishes to speak during the public comment should type their name and address in the chat box, and you will be called on and unmuted when it's your turn to speak. Public comments that were submitted to the town clerk prior to the meeting will be read first. As usual, public comments will be limited no more than three minutes. Thank you for being patient with us as we adjust to hosting electronic meetings. As it relates to public comment, anyone who wishes to speak during public comment periods should type their name and address in the chat box, and you will be called on and unmuted when it's your turn to speak. Public comments that were submitted to the town clerk prior to the meeting will be read first by myself or by the mayor pro tem. As usual, public comments will be limited no more than three minutes. Thank you. The regular meeting of the Southern Shores Town Council over May the 5th, 2020 is now in session. Before I ask you to join me in the presence of allegiance, I would like to welcome those of you who are with us via Zoom. Thank you for being here, participating in me. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the great power of our which stands before our nation under our command and in this world with the great justice of our own.
Thank you. I would ask, as you join me in the moment of silence, that we all pray for our leaders at every level. Help them in reaching good decisions as we move forward in handling the uncertainties to this time we're in. Thank you. Thank you. At this time, counsel, I would make a motion to amend the agenda to include a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6 regarding the ongoing town manager selection process. I would propose that we go into closed session immediately following item 7B of the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a second from Mr. Holland, Councilman Holland. Any discussion? Here is no discussion. I'll call for the, for the, an aye or a no, yes or no. I'll go around the room like we did before so everybody knows how you voted. Matt?
Aye.
Leo?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
And the mayor says aye as well. Motion is made and carried, so we'll go into closed session following item 7B of the agenda. This time I get a motion, counsel, to approve the consent agenda, which is a workshop minutes and the regular meeting minutes for the last two meetings. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Leo. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye or yes. Matt?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Elizabeth. And then the mayor supports that as well with an aye. This time I will look at staff reports. Our interim town manager, planning director, Wes?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. In accordance with the state of North Carolina's Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act, the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021 was filed today with the town clerk and will be available for public inspection beginning May 6, 2020. Public notice of the proposed operating budget will be posted on the town's bulletin boards, the town's website, the town's social media outlet, and in a notice of public hearing to be published in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 159-12 for a public hearing to be held June 1, 2020, at 5:30 PM in the Pitt Center. During the current fiscal year, the number of residential and commercial building permits has decreased compared to fiscal year 2018, 2019, but the number of new single-family dwellings are on track to exceed those permitted in the previous two fiscal years. Due to the revaluation of all property in Southern Shores that was completed earlier this year, the overall value of the town's taxable property increased 20%. This results in a resetting of the town's tax rate to 19.58 cents in order to keep revenues the same to fund the current cost of expenses. Property taxes comprise 53% of the town's major sources of revenues in this proposed budget. The other major sources of revenue for the town of Southern Shores include occupancy tax, sales tax, and land transfer tax, which is distributed to each municipality in Dare County. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we are projecting a 20% reduction in occupancy tax revenue, 5% decrease in sales tax revenue, and 2.5% decrease in land transfer revenue. As directed by council, the $662,340 that has traditionally been allocated to fund street projects has been used to offset the anticipated loss of revenue due to the COVID-19 pandemic. During the months of February and March, Finance Officer Bonnie Swain and I met with each department head, including the Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department, and gathered the proposed expenses for services for the next fiscal year. The costs for contracted services, including lifeguard service, lemon branch collection, and fire protection are established in each contract. Those expenses and revenues were presented to council at the April 21, 2020 budget work session, which was broadcasted on the Zoom online meeting platform. Council had the opportunity to ask questions about each line item as they were reviewed. The finance officers made the adjustments to the budget as directed by the council at the work session, and the proposed budget is balanced at the revenue-neutral rate without a tax increase. The proposed budget has been filed and will be available for public inspection tomorrow morning. Following the public hearing held on June 1, 2020, council may amend the proposed budget or adopt it as proposed, which must occur prior to July 1, 2020. That concludes the budget message. Mayor and council will now move on to planning director report.
Thank you. Thank you, Wes.
With respect to March, since we didn't do monthly reports last month, there were 46 permits issued that consisted of 10 zoning permits, 17 building permits, 17 trade permits, two lot disturbance permits. The total amount of fees collected in March was $11,426.20. With respect to April permits, 32 permits were issued that consisted of six zoning permits, eight building permits, 16 trade permits, and two lot disturbance permits. The total amount of fees collected in April was $5,989.50. With respect to the town planning board, they will be meeting on May 18 at 5:30 here in the Pitt Center to continue their consideration of the new flood maps and update to the Southern Shores Town Code, Chapter 16 Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance. They met last night here in the Pitt Center for their first meeting to consider the update to the flood damage prevention ordinance and the new maps, and I think it went very well. We received a good input. Few revisions are going to be made to the current draft, and the board is going to consider it again at the May 18 meeting. Any questions on that?
What's the draw-dead date on having that completed?
June 19, I believe.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, sir. So hopefully, we assume all will go well at the May 18 meeting and that you all could hold the public hearing on July 1st. Any other questions on any of that?
Just this one.
Yes, sir.
The revisions you're making are being proposed. Do they have to be approved by the state then, or is there any further?
They don't have to be, but we, the proposed, the draft prior to last night, the one they considered last night, that had been reviewed by state officials, and they gave it, they had okayed it.
Okay.
So the revisions we're making, it doesn't require their approval, but we're still going to send it to them, you know, what we're changing, and make sure that they don't have any objections, just to be safe and cause any further delay later on.
Okay. Thank you.
What happens, Wes, after June 19th? After we meet the deadline, submit what we need to submit? What's, what's next?
Then the map has become effective, and then ordinance has been updated, and we're in compliance.
So there's no, the state having to approve it or anything? It's just done?
Once it's adopted locally, it's adopted. It's in effect. And that's, we just have to make sure it's done prior to that date.
One other question. All the prints of the floodplain basins and everything that's in the conference room in the Pitt Center, is that related to their work here?
Those are maps that we had produced by the Dare County GIS and Mapping Department. Those maps weren't used last night. There are some information in there that were, that we think needs to be confirmed that we didn't use. But yeah, it's related to all that, but those maps weren't used last night, the large maps.
Okay.
We had two maps in the back of the room last night that show elevations, properties, you know, what their first floor elevation is, as well as the preliminary maps, you know, flood zones, as well as the current map flood zones.
Okay.
Other questions?
Thank you.
All right, I'll move on to the manager's report. With respect to the town's response to COVID-19, town offices remain closed to the public, and all services are still being provided. The spring large item pickup was postponed, and we're currently waiting for confirmation for a new date. We will continue to monitor updates from the governor and Dare County and assess reopening town offices as restrictions are lifted. With respect to the East Oakwood Trail Street projects, work on the East Oakwood Trail Street Improvement Project east of NC 12 continues. The project completion date was May 1, which has been delayed until May 10. The delay is due to the discovery of additional asphalt materials greater than four inches in thickness that had to be removed, and additional concrete needed for the apron at the EMS SSVFD station. There have also been delays in the delivery of supplies due to COVID-19. With respect to the work on the East Oakwood Trail west of NC 12, work began this week and should be completed by May 22. With respect to the South Oakwood Trail walking path, construction on the path continues, and the project is about 90% complete. Most of the work on the actual path itself is done. The remaining work includes completion of the safety curbs, fine grading, seating, fiberglass delineators, and striping. With respect to lifeguard services, now that we've had some weather, you know, some nicer warm weather, the town's contracted lifeguard service began roving patrols the first weekend of April. There currently isn't any anticipated reduction in the number of lifeguards as we approach the summer season. With respect to beach nourishment, even though that is an agenda item, later on, I wanted to touch on at least one part of it, the grant application that was discussed. As directed by council, we submitted an application for option four in the town's beach management plan for funding through NCDQ's Division of Water Resources Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Grant. While discussing the application with Ken Wilson, it was determined that the Pelican Watch maintenance wasn't necessary because Kitty Hawk included that in their grant application as part of their 2022 maintenance project. They also included it in their FEMA assistance requests for sand loss due to storm damage. We discussed how the funding, if awarded, could be used for the Pelican Watch maintenance with the Kitty Hawk Town Manager, and he verbally agreed to allowing us to use those funds for that work if needed. Lastly, some good news with respect to Hurricane Dorian. With respect to reimbursement, we were recently notified that a closeout meeting for our FEMA public assistance request will be held soon, and we will be receiving approximately $500,000. Finance Officer and Human Resource Officer Bonnie Swain has done a great job in working with local state and FEMA officials in securing this reimbursement. And thank you for all your hard work on this. It's just been a tough time, I know. That concludes my report. If y'all have any questions on any of them, I'd be glad to try to answer those for you.
Great work, Bonnie. Thank you.
The study, the grant proposal that we authorized, two of them, I mean, we only paid for one.
Yes, sir. The cost, it was still the same cost, and it, the initial amount they gave us when we had discussed the estimate, that did not include the maintenance work. And when I brought it up with him, he said that, yeah, that estimate would still be fine. But, yeah.
Any other questions?
A quick question. Excuse me, it may be more for Bonnie, though, but during our work-study session, when, how was that FEMA money accounted for in the preliminary budget? As I recall, we did not factor it into any kind of projected.
The budget amendment was done to offset the expense, so it was.
Which, the?
The, that was done via budget amendment, so we did a budget amendment when we figured out how much the total expense was going to be to clean up the town. So a budget amendment was due to receive the revenue from FEMA, so the revenue has been recognized in this year's budget, and that will offset the expense.
Okay. Is that set up as a receivable loan?
It will only be set up as a receivable if we do not physically have it in hand by June 30. It's actually set up to be a revenue that will be received to help balance this year's budget.
The reason I ask that question, though, is because I'm wondering if it might free us up to do one or two road projects, but that is obviously a discussion later, for later.
That's a wash. So it's basically a wash. The revenue source and the expense source is a wash, so that's already been considered in those projections that I gave you all.
Okay. All right.
Yes, sir.
That clears that up. Yeah. We don't, we don't have extra funds.
In other words, we didn't get a $500,000, it wouldn't fall, right?
Yeah.
You have Bonnie. Wes, you too? Thank you. This time I'll call on David Cole. I pleased you. Good evening, David.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Two monthly reports, first one will be March 2020. We had 1,627 calls for service. That's an increase of about seven compared to last year. As you can see, the breakdown for the incidents and the crimes, the actual offenses, we had a total of 15. Under the criminal arrests, we actually had four criminal arrests, but out of that, we were totaled in 10 charges. Under the written citations, 20 citations, 22 charges out of that. Warning citations, officers handed out 23, and that was out of 42 traffics. And our local ordinances, we had five, most of those, those were all pardoned in the right way. And so we had five reports on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. For the month of April, 2020, we had 2,211 calls for service. That's an increase of 804 compared to last year. The majority of those were a lot more people were calling and asking us to conduct more property checks. We also directed the officers to do more business checks because of the possibility of criminal activity, let's say. Out of the incidents, which were the crimes we reported, there were eight incidents, there were 12 total offenses. And for criminal arrests, there were three arrests for a total of eight charges altogether. And you can see one of those was bringing in an arraignment, one for vandalism. Two of those were drug-related, and one was a warrant, one was for resisting arrest. Under the written citations for traffic, out of 16 traffic stops, the officers handed out 10 citations for a total charge of 12. Under the warning citations, the officers handed out 16 warning citations. Local ordinances, we had one fight, this weather pardon, and we had seven more here last month for April. I have handed out the police department's annual report. We've also given Sheila a PBR copy, but she'll be able to put it on the town's website. Now, we'll have hard copies available once the police department is allowed to reopen. Couple of things that I would like you to understand is that for the last month and a half to two months, all police chiefs, including sheriff here on the beach, we've met approximately five different times on five different occasions. We're all continuing to stay on the same page. Some of the problems that we were concerned with, obviously, were keeping up patrols in business districts. We're starting to see a huge increase. And a lot of other drug activities, we also were concerned about protesters and those types of things, so we're all making sure we're all on the same page. So for example, if something was to occur over here at the bridge, you know, we'd be there to back up Kitty Hawk and the others. So we continue to keep close monitoring of all situations. And then last, I would like to thank this town council for the support that you've given the employees, specifically the police department. I know these are, these are trying times, unique times for all of us, so we truly, truly appreciate your support. If you have any questions, if you have anything to add.
Questions, anyone?
How are your officers holding up during all this?
They're actually doing well, and I appreciate it. And the families are doing well also. It's just, it's just different, but it's busy too, but they're doing okay.
Have there been any big challenges at the bridge, or can you share that?
It's all too many. And I believe that they, no, as you can see, it was just the opposite protesters that showed up that we had thought, and they were decent. They made it down, they were asking for them by Kitty Hawk.
Yes, I saw that where Kitty Hawk has an ordinance, you got to have a permit if you got more than 15 people.
Also 30 people is a little bit too much.
Yeah.
We just try to, we've received lots of calls, how come we're not going over to Walmart or over to Food Line? I just saw two people walking without masks and those types of things. Yeah. We're not, we're not going to release that, I can tell you that right now. Our recommendation, if you've got a problem, take it out of the manager of the store. And if they're actually leaving, they're usually, then we won't have to interview. But to me, I've seen enough ridiculous things the police departments have done, and I'm just not about to confuse them. Common sense goes along, and that's what we try to, try to share with everybody, is just common sense between civil and judge.
I would like to ask you, if you get a chance, to pass on congratulations and job-well-done to the police officers in Kitty Hawk and Dare County, because they've been very efficient and courteous and everything.
And especially the sheriffs, the ones that are out there working.
Yeah.
There's just a lot of people out there that aren't happy, you know, no matter what, and they take a run. We stand out there for 12 hours and all kinds of work, and so my heads are off. Some of those, I know, they call themselves the geriatric group. They're supposed to be my age, and all of us out there, I'm on page that listen to people's complaints. That kind of, that kind of goes.
Yep. Well, please, please pass that on to them.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Appreciate your report.
I will send the fire chief in.
That's fine. We'll wait a few minutes for that.
Mr. Mayor, I actually have a little bit of a report tonight, if you want me to.
Sure. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Take up some time between now and public comment.
No, no problem, man. Yes. Should have thought of that. I thought about it in follow-up.
It's pretty rare that I have a report, and I don't have much to report, except for yesterday, the General Assembly did actually get together and pass a couple of bills. One of them being more of an appropriations bill and an aid relief bill similar to what the federal government did, and it's 25 or 30 pages long, and it's relatively complicated and much above my pay grade unless I'm having an opportunity to sit down and read it. The other bill is much longer and even more complicated, but it does have some local government related things, primarily related to electronic meetings during the time of a declared emergency, if it's declared by the governor. The General Assembly did not take up the opportunity to do two things. First, they did not take up the opportunity to expand that to declarations declared solely by local government, and they also did not take up the opportunity to fix the issues with the general statutes generally about electronic meetings. So what they did was, in the emergency declaration provisions of the general statutes, the part that gives the mayor and the governor various authority during emergencies, they added provisions in there that said, when the governor declares an emergency, here's how you can have electronic meetings. Most of it is consistent with the policy that y'all have already received and adopted. Most of it is consistent with the policy that y'all have already received and adopted. There are a couple of minor differences, or minor things to note about it. Things that you're already doing, the notice of how to connect to the meeting needs to be in the meeting notice. It does allow for quasi judicial hearings, but it has some complicated provisions that have to be met to do those if you're having an electronic meeting, which strangely, this is not an electronic meeting. Y'all happen to be having a normal, regular, full quorum, full everybody here meeting, and having the public have the opportunity, the rare opportunity historically, to be able to contribute real time and not be here, but that's not an electronic meeting under this new statutory scheme. But if it was an electronic meeting, if any one of you was participating electronically under a declaration of emergency by the governor and were desiring to vote and be counted as a quorum, there were provisions about that. One, you have to have a roll call vote, kind of like you were doing earlier. Members have to identify themselves before discussing and before voting. So you'd have to say, I'm Matt Neal, this is what I want to talk about, I'm Leo Holland, this is what I'm voting. And you have to, for written, for public hearings, you have to take written comments up to 24 hours after the public hearing. Now, and that's just four or five things that kind of stood out as interesting parts of it. Otherwise, most of it's consistent with what you're already doing. I'm going to try and, before your next regular meeting, I'm going to try and modify the electronic meeting policy that you have so that it matches up with what's there. The law also covers things like immunity for essential businesses, for people getting sick at essential businesses, people getting sick at Town Hall, as long as you're not, you know, overly absurd about how unsanitary your conditions are in general, I think that they're going to allow that, as you would expect, it, it's kind of, it's a risk that people have to take, is that they might get sick going somewhere in public. They also provided some immunity for healthcare workers. They addressed, I believe, some of the bond issues that had come up in the press recently. And it's just a very large, complicated catch-all bill that touches all parts of life and local government and state government, then, then do too much to local government, but it covers just all sorts of different areas. So it's, it's worth reading if you're, if you're interested in board, but I wanted to let you know it was out there and that if I find anything else useful besides the electronic meetings policy part, I'll, I'll let you know.
That's probably in legal ease, so it'd be tough to interpret at all.
Well, it's, it's, well, it's not only just tough, but it's, you know, analyzing a bunch of areas that, that a lot of people, you know, you gotta be from, I can go through there and very quickly find the electronic meeting stuff and say, okay, I understand what it's talking about, and then some of the other stuff, I'd have to go back and probably do days worth of research to understand just any idea of what it's talking about.
Did they address at all the special obligation bond issue?
I, I think I saw that in there.
Yes, they did.
I, I did see, and what I'll say is, I saw the title of it, and when you say address, maybe address is the correct term, fix appropriately, I don't know, I'd have to look, look at it in detail to see if they fixed it appropriately.
When you get a chance to look at it in detail, can you send Wes or council, a summary of what your take is on that?
Yeah.
That's a pretty important issue to us right now.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that. And if, if there are any other local government-specific stuff that I see that pops out that's affecting y'all, let Wes know about that as well.
Right, thanks.
Any other questions for me?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your question, Jim. At this time, I'll call on our fire chief, Ed Limbacher, for a report. Good afternoon, chief.
So I have about two, the fourth story from all these last ones, I mean, the first one will be March, and the fire department in March has one 53 calls, just three building fires, one chimney fire, one acid burn fire, one, two brush fires, 27 EMS calls, one murder vehicle accident with injuries, one out, one short circuit, one service call, one public service, two alarms, and two citizen complaints, again, 43 calls in March. Any question on marches?
How's it compare with last year's March report?
It's a little bit higher, but that's typical of the entire beach spread out, the call volumes way down for everybody. I imagine that's probably going to change in the next week or two. I don't know, it's all the first call table, we have the glove up and down up and everything else, so I'm hoping this is over as quick as possible. Last year exactly, there were 54 calls, so it's a little bit behind 43. And if we take the equal, it's 47 versus 31. So it's, it's a little bit behind, that's typical of the entire beach right now, at least for public safety. I don't know about the police, but. Any other questions? So for April, 31 total calls, one structure fire, 12 EMS calls, one car rescue, one CO incident, two service calls, two assistant police regarding the agency, two public service, one alarm that's burning, four alarms, and one citizen complaint. That's it. And like I said, it was 47 versus 31. So, a little bit behind.
Yeah. Any, any questions for the chief?
No, I don't have any.
What do you respond to a citizen complaint? What does that look like?
Well, a lot of them are on your address, but it's something like someone calls, hey, you're doing your truck in Jersey, and it's more like they're complaining about their name or their name, or they have a question concerning size or something like that, so yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah. I don't want to, I don't want to embarrass Ed, but I want to tell you, I went to, and walked through the new fire station within this past weekend. We spent about an hour and a half there, and it's, it's an impressive site. Thanks in large part to his efforts, his dedication to making this happen. We've, we're on our way to a first-rate and phenomenal firefighting facility, fire station. It's just a piece of really, really wonderful piece of work. It's a, I think it will be a valuable asset to our community. It has a, in addition to the fire station and the housing, the equipment and the personnel, if we have to save people, although they can now, before they couldn't have done that. It's also got an emergency operations center there built in, which is equivalent to what they have in Dare County, and far superior to what we have in the pit center, in this, in this building and the, and the town hall. Anyway, I just want to commend the chief for his efforts on this and the way it's coming along. He's not happy with the progress, he's not moving quickly enough, but it's going to be a wonderful facility when it's finished. And I think we're looking at sometime in July, probably, chief.
I mean, they pushed the tape back, almost every meeting.
I shouldn't ask that question.
My last call was like, you know, just please do it right.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to tell you, we're, we're still, you know, good understand. Just, we're already so far behind, just do it right, so I'll have to call you back.
Right.
So, I mean, I spent probably at least two hours of my day in one of those, or something other thing, where, hey, this is supposed to be mayor, that's this, you know, that kind of stuff, but, you know, we can't do this over here, that's all I'm saying. I'm sure all my guys want to.
Be glad to have them back in that structure and doing their thing.
Yeah, you know, the guys, you can actually see it now when you go in there, to vision things, and get kind of excited about it, it's kind of hard to keep them out on this level, because they don't want to come into that, you know, so that's no fun, you know? So hopefully, I didn't really see that coming, definitely chief did. It's been kind of hard for me to swallow, you know, especially because of the COVID-19 stuff, and all the other training, you know, it's just, it's pretty difficult. I guess at least hit the station and maybe cross that road, and hopefully the COVID-19 thing will die, or certain, I'm hoping, but, you know, it's.
I think we all hope that.
Yeah, I agree. We haven't done, modified or responded to that, obviously, because I can't afford to park and get sick. I'd love to be the only one that called in the other day, because there is a danger of, but we don't want to call me to get sick here, but, I mean, everybody's going to see a boat down here, so.
Yeah.
My own resources, hopefully we can get this, like you said.
Thank you, Ed. Ed, good, are you open for a tour sometime, or?
Yeah, I asked, I actually saw Elizabeth out the apartment, and they only asked her because she was one of the few that were totally involved in this besides Matt. I figure that he's more familiar with building than I am, so it's not really going to be easy. Certainly, you've kind of seen it your life, so that's why, yeah, no problem. Most of all, yeah, my, 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 Tom certainly does, but, yeah, with the setup, I'd like to go in the evening if you don't want to, I don't want to go in there, but.
Yeah, well, safety issue too.
Yeah, anytime I want to go over and see, probably a good idea for at least one trip for each one of you, just get in there, get a little look at it, because I'm going to, people will think it's very nice, and it absolutely is, but this was all, I was expressing my concern to the mayor Sunday, this was all in the plans from day one, meeting after meeting, meeting after public hearing. There's no secrets, it was all in the plan. It was on the internet, Peter Purdall, it was, if you didn't read it, then shame on you, that's all I can say. So.
I think Ed was concerned a bit about the fact that he might be subject to some criticism because it's not a nice facility. It really is well done, but it's state of the art, it's what it's supposed to be, and we designed it to, to serve more than one purpose. We designed it in the, in the anticipation that at some point in time, three years, five years, I hope 20 years from now, you may have to go to a paid, a paid fire department. And if we do, this, this facility will accommodate that without doing anything much more to it.
There'll be not many times that will be, here's the case, all of those, everything in it, it's all in contract, you work that whole office, there really will be no pickup, that you'll just be like, hey, sorry to be here, sorry for your attention.
Hopefully, we'll get to that bridge, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, but, you know, if it comes to well-prepared, the future, the equipments, on the equipment side, we're very well-prepared for anything that comes up, it's just good to maintain, you know, hours, you know, hopefully when the building comes, I hear the kids talking all the time, they can't sleep in there. Not medical, but they continue sleeping. But I do think it'll be very nice, it's built really, and I said this to the mayor Sunday, the only thing that's ever hurt you is when it starts coming with water. That's it, because it's all concrete, and in, in, the EVC part, he was talking about, it's all concrete, we're all around the outside, and then inside that structure, there's not a room, there's hardly as well, so, I mean, for something that hurts you in there, it's up flying or something, that's just not fair. This is it. We take this word, you need water, and if water's a bad, we probably should, so. But I'm looking forward to, if anybody wants to come see you, welcome, just call me cell phone, we'll get out and spend some time next time.
I'd recommend it too, it's really worth seeing. Thank you, chief, very much, great job.
Thank you, chief.
General public comment. Item 4 under Old Business, a recycling update. Wes, it's your, this is your, your show.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a brief update for you all about recycling. We spoke with a TFC representative on April 23rd, and they are now accepting recyclable materials again, but their processing fee is $95 per ton, and that's excluding collection and delivery. We also spoke with the president of RDS on April 24th to discuss the questions and concerns we had with his proposal to process recycling, and he indicated that he could be, he could be flexible on the 12% threshold for unacceptable materials and the contract term. At the budget workshop, council indicated concern, as well as staff, we had concerns with those two items. He indicated that he would be willing to increase that threshold in the contract from 12% to 18%, and the contract term, instead of five years, could be one to two years, with the option to renew for five years. Recall that this proposal would be, the current proposal, there would be a contract between the town and RDS. That doesn't include collection and delivery. So we spoke with Josh Smalls with Bay Disposal today, well, we had had numerous conversations, but today was the last one. They had a meeting with RDS as well, and to see if they could work out an agreement with RDS so that we would only have to amend our contract with Bay Disposal in the event we wanted to go with RDS. And Josh Smalls said that it was unlikely that they would be able to work something out where it would be, they would have their own agreement with RDS, and then we would have our, we would just amend our current contract with Bay Disposal. The reason why RDS prefers a contract with us and the other municipalities in Dare County is to help them secure loans for additional equipment and/or new facility, new marquee facility location. So we kind of touched on this also at the budget work session, the total cost to have a contract with RDS for processing and Bay Disposal for collection and delivery of single-stream materials with glass would be $195,201 annually, which equates to $6.80 per home. This would be an increase of $5,701 compared to the cost to take materials to Wheeler Breiter, which is what we're doing right now, which is what is in the budget for next fiscal year, continue to take the materials to Wheeler Breiter. The cost to have a contract with RDS for processing and Bay Disposal for collection and delivery for single-stream materials without glass would be $190,467 annually, which equates to $6.63 per home. This would be an increase of $967 compared to the cost to take materials to Wheeler Breiter. Both estimates are based on the rates included in the current proposal that we have from RDS, which is valid for probably another 30 to 45 days. Based on the rates included in the proposal, they are, they would be subject to change on July 1, 2021, due to a percentage change in the CPI, Consumer Price Index. That concludes my report. If y'all have any questions, I can try to answer them at this time, but that's where we stand with recycling at the moment. We've, like we said, we do, we continue looking for other options and sources other than Wheeler Breiter. We all know it's not the best option, but it's what we all, I think everyone agrees and council directed we do for now, and the TFC option sounds pretty costly, and then we have the RDS option along with Bay Disposal, two separate contracts, or continue to go to Wheeler Breiter.
I think the key, the key thing here, as I understand it, is that we're going back to traditional recycling, where you're going to have recycled, actually recycled and not, and not incinerated.
That's correct, RDS would be true recycling.
I think the, the cost differential is not, is not, to me, is not a huge obstacle, if, if council feels that's a, that's the way we should go, is to go back to a true recycling, like recycling program. But I'm, I'm not going to speak over him while I have his own questions. Bill, so any thoughts about this?
Oh, I have a few.
Concerns, issues?
One, I'd rather do true recycling also rather than Wheeler Breiter, if it's, if it works, but there's still, Wes, you mentioned two items that council had brought up in the last council meeting concerning that contract, but there was, I didn't.
Severability, you're, you also had a comment about severability.
Yes, because what I'm cautious about is, is that we get a year into this or two years, and the prices are just getting to be astronomical, that right now, they've addressed severability, but it's all to benefit the company's terms, terms and everything, so. I am not an expert in contract law by any means, but I have read it, you know, had to sign my name on some contract, you know, similar to this in my own business, and usually there's an out for either party that, you know, where either party can, and it's not necessarily contingent upon something that the opposite party has done. I guess where I'm leading here with this long dialogue is, can you work with Mr. Gallup and just make sure that the town's interests are protected here?
Absolutely, I mean, that's what we would do with any contract. I've asked Ben to give it a review, I'm not sure if he's had the time to look at everything in it, but if you have any questions, he may be able to answer that part of it.
I have, I, I started looking at it at a glance yesterday in the middle of a bunch of other things, because that's when it came up, and it's, it's more comprehensive than your last contract.
Yes.
It's, you know, 30 pages long, and there are definitely some, some things that stand out as being interesting, one that it applies.
to, to look at everything in it, but I don't know, if you have any question, he, he may be able to answer that part of it.
I have, I, I started looking at it, at a glance yesterday in the middle of a bunch of other things, because that's when it came up, and it's, uh, it's more comprehensive than your last contract.
Yes.
Um, it's, you know, 30 pages long, and there are definitely some, some things that stand out as being interesting, one that it applies, you know, seeks to use Virginia law rather than North Carolina law, that could be, uh, a, at least for me, a complication, since I'm not licensed in Virginia, um, and it could end up that you'd have to fight them in Virginia, and whether or not you can even agree to that, I'd, I'd need to look into. Um, but my recommendation would be, is that, uh, you, you direct Wes, if you're interested in potentially going with these folks, direct Wes to negotiate with R D S the best contract that he can obtain from them, working with me to, to try and address some of the provisions that might be in there, and then bring it back to you and let you decide then whether or not to, to, uh, to take it or not.
Well, and that's, that's exactly what I'm getting at, I'm, I'm asking for council to authorize that you be involved in this, um, I'm.
It's pretty clear that an attorney drafted their.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I think, and that, it's clear for more than one reason, it's not just the fact that at the bottom of the page, it's got the little, uh, notation of where it is in their document management system, which is a common.
This is nothing but legalese.
Yeah, it is. And it's, there, there are definitely some provisions that didn't strike me as problematic and, and were, were more useful than the, the contract that you currently had, um, with, with Bay, that were clear about the requirement to recycle and the requirements to do things and, and what triggered some changes, but then there are some provisions that definitely have, um, some different issues.
That severability clause, I keep going back to that because I don't want, and this is where your involvement will help, I, I just hate to see the town locked into a five-year contract, and then two years or whatever down the road, it's killing us on costs.
Yeah, and, and I, I was, I looked at the, the termination provisions and, you know, the termination provisions are, there isn't a, a just the ability to terminate the contract at will, um, as you current, and you didn't really have that in the initial Bay disposal contract either, um, you, either, and, and that one, one of the other parties would have had to default for the other party to have been able to terminate without any risk, um, so that's not uncommon, but in your, in the amendment, you know, I, I don't know if it's actually, y'all approved that, but the amendment, um, does have the ability of, I think 60 days you can just walk, or if it's a cost provision that you've got to negotiate in 30 days, so maybe we could work something out similar to that, but it's just like any other contract, that, you know, what you're, what you're doing with a contract is you're putting different risks on one side or the other, and those risks have value potentially to one side or the other.
I'm hoping you can help mitigate the risk to the town's southern shores.
Yeah, and, but I'm just saying that that might, the, the, the question of mitigating the risk, that they may be amenable to that, or it may come at a cost increase, because it takes, you know, just the, the basics of having a termination provision, if you've got a term contract for two years, you can plan, you know what your money is, but if somebody can knock it off in 30 days' notice, then there's some risk that you might, that, 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 that there are, that there is a value to that, to the other party, so, um, no guarantees that they'll change their perspective on that, but we'll do our best and see if we can get you something better.
And I'm not, and I'm not saying that we drop a contract like that, but we have to have better than what's currently in that contract, some way of getting out of the long-term financial bind, I mean, trap is a better word.
They've indicated, Wes, the table, excuse me, Wes, they've indicated, Wes, they're willing to, to go to a one-year contract, the options to renew it up to five years, a two-year contract, they've shown some, they've shown some flexibility, uh, and willingness to negotiate, I think, I think, I don't know this for certain, but I think this company is, is really anxious to, to establish themselves and, and get it rolling.
Yes.
Um, and they want to expand their operations, so I think they, they're willing to work with us, I, I get that feeling, I, I'm, I'm okay with that, the thing, I, I think, that struck me as kind of funny, is it's, it's, it's less expensive if we, if we don't give them any glass, if we do something else with the glass, we don't have any place to get rid of.
Yeah, that's my question.
Right.
How do we separate?
Glass cage, something to throw glass bottles into, but, uh, otherwise, I think we, we can, Wes can work with them and come back with something to, to us, for us to consider.
Yes, I, I have no doubt, I just wanted to make sure that Ben is representing the town's interests on some of these issues, but then also, Wes, ask them to clean that thing up, they keep referencing, um, that they will inspect the town's site.
Yes.
It's like we have a, uh, drop-off and disposal area here, but just clean up some of that, you know, stuff that's not applicable to the town.
Yeah, and that, and the other one is verifying our scales.
Their what?
Verifying the scales.
Yes.
That we don't have one, but, so I imagine that will have to be in the contract with, uh, with Bay.
Yeah.
Because they would still want to weigh it prior to them weighing it, so we have verification.
Well, I understand, but we, we have no control over that.
Yeah.
It's not like we got a scale sitting out here somewhere that, before they go across the bridge, they go across it. So I had, and then the other one was that definition of the 24 hours notice of, of correction, of correcting your issue. Is that three days, or is that an actual time clock of 24 hours?
That one I haven't seen yet.
It's in there.
In the 32 pages of the document.
Yeah, it's in there, I saw that one.
24 hours one, so I had to look at that, but that's probably.
Well, it's the definition of, you know, what is it going to be? You know, if it's, uh, 24 hours, as you would say, the 24-hour clock, you know, that's not much time, so I'm assuming, and I hate to assume, uh, it's probably three eight-hour days, or the business, the, the business days.
I'd have to see, I, I didn't see anything about 24 hours when I scanned.
It's in there, I don't have it highlighted, but it's stuck, it's stuck with me.
But I, I'll find it, and I'll look at it and see if I can figure out.
Thank you.
Wes, I do want to thank you for all, everything you've put into this, but just again, we need your take on this, I think.
Glad to help. Sure, that was, that was the plan, so are you all asking that I move forward with the town attorney in negotiating a contract with R D S? If so, y'all taking, taking action.
I'll make that motion, that we authorize Wes to move forward in working with the town attorney to negotiate a contract with R D S.
Do we need a motion, you think, Ben?
I would say that's probably a good idea.
Fine, fine, that's good.
And the only thing I would add is, we've already talked about it a little bit, but at this point, the R D S contract is going to also be dependent on a Bay disposal contract, and I would, um, I'd put those together, I wouldn't want them, there may be some consideration to try and do them all as one thing, I don't know if the parties are, would be willing to do that, but that would be, that would at least limit the number of documents for folks to look at, um, but in any event, you, you don't want to contract with one and negotiate with one, and then have some part of negotiating with the other be that they don't match.
Yeah, they could be in conflict.
Let me draw that motion and make another one, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the town attorney, I mean, um.
Town manager.
Wes Haskett, to work with the town attorney to negotiate with the companies and present us an option at our next town council meeting.
That'd be the regular meeting in June or the May 19th workshop meeting? June meeting would probably be a little.
Yeah, June would be a probably easier one.
Just clarify.
So you're saying the June meeting?
I'd say the June meeting.
Okay, we'll shoot for that.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Leo, appreciate that. Any further discussion?
If, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to point out, you know, based on our, um, most recent history with recycling, um, and what we know about the markets and the way, um, they are unpredictable, um, we have to be able to, uh, you know, from the company's side, they want to be able to raise their prices if, if the markets, you know, force them to do that, or they go out of business, but also on our side, if for some reason, uh, the markets push in the other direction, you know, we need to be able to negotiate a new price downward, so somewhere in there, there has to be that ability, because what we've learned from the last eight months is that this particular area is quite volatile, and I, you know, I think we just need to be smart about, you know, how we go forward.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good thoughts, Elizabeth.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just made one comment, um, with respect to the price without glass and what we could do with glass, um, the county has, uh, offered that we could purchase a receptacle from them, where, and they would collect, they would collect the glass from the receptacle, uh, and use it at their crushing facility, their public works facility, um, but we don't, we don't have anywhere to put it, um, we would have to find somewhere to put it, we would have to, it would have to be a fenced-in area, it would have to be paved, most likely, uh, someone would have to be there to attend to it, um, so that would just be something else, if we wanted to go the no-glass option, we would have to consider that as well as how to solve those problems in order to make that work. Just wanted to make sure everybody's clear that there is, it, there is a possibility to address that, but we would have to take some steps.
Does the county then charge us for the glass when we bring it to them, or is that all in them?
I think so.
Or is that based into the cost of the container?
We just pay, we pay, I think we would just, I believe, we would just pay for the receptacle and there wouldn't be any costs, they would just, they would take it and then they would process it using their glass crusher.
Is that something that if we decide, well, I'm probably getting the car, the horse, or the car ahead of the horse, would be, how, when would it be open, uh, how would it be managed?
I think it operates every, at least weekday, um, when, when they have enough glass to, to crush.
No, I'm talking about our, that, our, our collection here, our, the container, you said we'd have to, we'd have it in a fenced-in area.
Yes, yes.
And then is that open?
Yeah, we would have to consider.
Seven, five days a week, and then, then somebody's got to manage it, um, I, I just see.
I, if, if you think about the weight of glass, and if our single stream is no longer accepting glass, and we have an 18% kickback, we don't want our tourist residents to start filling those bins up with glass and not be aware that it doesn't accept it, because we're going to have a hard enough time tracking what plastics, the only bin for the plastic.
I, I agree.
It's going to have a certain weight, but if we exclude glass at the cheap price that they're offering it to us, I think we're going to hit that 18% weight threshold pretty quick on, on the residue.
Yeah.
That's, I, I think it's cheap enough to include glass without really digging up.
I, I just see, the other, it's a viable option, but I don't think we have the ability to implement it.
Matt, what'd you say, you said you thought we could include the glass in the?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, I thought you said that, thank you.
I agree with that.
So we have a motion, we have a second, um, any further discussion?
I, I'm just one, I'm, I'm favoring that, I think we all want to be really aware of this 18% threshold, which we are, but, you know, a lot of consumer plastic is not going to be acceptable, and we, we need to have a budget, probably for an education campaign, or stickers to put on the bins or something, because I think our residents will be largely compliant, I, I'm concerned with the rental homes, um, and, and looking at the severability, you know, we can just stop sending them trucks for 30 days, then we're in default, and then we can notify them that we're terminating the contract, so that it's not as severe as it appears, but the, so if we start getting big bills in the middle of summer because of rental homes, we can just stop sending the recycling out, um, but, that being said, I, I think an education campaign needs to be, I don't know how to execute that, and, and that probably would be a corollary once we negotiate the contract, but if we want to go down this road, um, it's only, they're only accepting number one, number two, I mean, that's a, that's a small amount of consumer plastics that you're taking away from the grocery store, so, but it's just, I know everybody's aware of that, but I want to say it one more time.
This is a, this is a same conversation, well, similar conversation with Wes and I had earlier today, and that was that we, we, we don't really have the controls over the people that come in the summertime, and you find almost anything, and your, your recyclers can and vice versa, you know? It's, it's really, really hard to monitor that, and I think education program is really critical with, with rental companies.
Yeah, and it's.
Push it really hard.
And specifically, if they're coming from an area that they just don't worry about it, and they just put everything in the re, where they recycle where they're coming from, they make the same assumption that's, that's here.
It's the same as wherever they're from.
Yeah.
So, I mean, stickers on the bins, I mean, any kind of thing that we, you were going to.
I, I was going to say, that's, that's a very good point, and if the council is going to do that, of course, we've already discussed at our workshop in April that that would require a budget amendment, you know, after July 1, if we're going to do a budget amendment to do that, I would probably put some extra in there to help offset, um, if we do have to pay, you know, for the, over the 18% a time or two, and also to educate the residents as you're, um, talking about, so you, instead of doing a $5,700 budget amendment, maybe you do a $10,000 budget amendment and put in there, and then that would give you some leeway to educate the citizens, the residents, and, um, you know, also, time to time, if there is some overage, you know, that would just be my recommendation to take care of that.
And, 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 Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify one thing on what you said about how the default provision in the 30 days. I'm not going to.
Be careful, Matt.
If, if, the way it would work is, if you stopped them from getting the stuff for 30 days, and they gave you the cure period, and you didn't, you know, told you to cure it, and then you didn't cure it, then you would be in default, and it would allow them to terminate without breaching the contract, however, your default would be a breach, and then you would be susceptible to damages to them for.
Have you read that section?
Uh, that portion I've read in general, I, I have, I mean, that's, but that's how it, unless you have a provision that allows for a period of time or just the ability to walk away, that's how that works, and, and, you know, there's provision up in the front that makes, basically makes them your exclusive provider, so, you know, one of, then the, the default provision says, if you don't follow the requirements of the contract, one of which is to make them the exclusive provider, and to provide them with materials, that's where that default would come in, and then they would give you, they'd have a 30-day time that they could give you to cure it, but if you didn't cure it, then they, then you would be in default, they could terminate without being in breach, but your default is the same, is a breach. Well, if they're not processing material and there's no fee to be had, what, what would be the theoretical punishment of a breach of contract at that point? The profits that they would have lost for the term of the contract from then on. But if there's no, because it's based upon a deliverable. Yeah, but they're forcing the delivery. Do they have a minimum tonnage we have to send them? No, but you're there. I mean, how would you, how would you pursue that? I mean, I understand it would be breached and you pursue the breach, but you'd have to prove a dollar value laws. Well, you're, you might be able to get around it if you just absolutely stopped doing recycling, but if you send it to somewhere else, you've been, so, right now, you can, the way the Bay disposal one's amended, is you can walk away from it on a period, a period of notice and go with another contract and go with another contractor because you want to. If you did that under this contract, the way I've, we, you know, read it so far, unless there's something really surprising to me in there, which I doubt this part's going to be surprising, it would not work that way. Yeah, I, I had one other thought, I'm pretty certain that you guys are going to cover this, but, so they have a pretty punitive fee to remove the residue on our behalf, or we can remove the residue, and in discussions with Bay, even if it could be set up so that like the next week, we remove what they've refused, and Bay disposes it on our behalf, I mean, that, that might be preferable than, than the fee, it, it may be bagel charges more than they will. Well, and, while y'all were discussing, I went and looked for the 24-hour concept, and I see what it's going on there, it's where you've got contaminated materials that they say, hey, what are you going to do with them, you've got a period of notice to tell them whether or not you're going to do with them, and then you got 24 hours, and I would not, it's not business time, it's 24 hours, it's a day from the time you tell them, unless they agree to something else, which they can agree to under the contract, and then if they have to ship it, then you got to pay, if you come and get it, then you don't have to pay them, but if you're paying Bay to go get it, then Bay's going to have to go get it, so that, that's something that would integrate. That's what. With the, the Bay contract and, and this contract, is that what you want is, they don't call you, they call Bay, and then Bay deals with that, and, and then you want to make sure in your contract with Bay, that they're going to deal with that and, and deal with it in a way that doesn't cost you. You're not expecting. Leaving there, so.
We got three, this is a challenge, we got, you know, there's three parties to this thing.
And, and that, that's why it would be nice if we can work out something that it's all in one document, where we're all, you know, everybody's contracting together, but everybody knows who to call and how to call.
Now, that's.
And, and that, that might be a better way to do it, if there, if the other parties were willing to do it. That's what, yeah, I won't, you, you take care of that part.
That's why we're asking you to work with Wes.
Perfect.
I, I get the, I get the impression from, from talking to Wes and also from reading the contract, I, they're, they're anxious to establish themselves and, and get, get a business started, be up and running, so I think they'd work with us, as they could.
But, but, companies out of Roanoke, Virginia.
Right, but they're looking for. Right. But they're looking for a place in Portsmouth to, you are.
Yeah, no, they're trying to find one in Elizabeth City, but that sounds like that may not be easy for them to do.
Right. Uh, Sheila, would you remind us what the, what the motion was and what it stands right now?
All the rest of the terms come out here.
Thank you. You made a second there. I think folks, all in favor of, of that motion, please indicate by saying that. Let's start with you.
Aye.
Aye.
Leo.
Aye.
Jim, thank you.
Aye.
Elizabeth, thank you. Now I vote aye. So takes care of old business, I think. Let's go to new business and Wes, it's your turn again.
Yes, sir. Um, this is also a brief update on beach nourishment, um, and a potential budget amendment request or actual budget amendment request. The proposal submitted by Ken Wilson that is included in your package consists of three tasks. Annual beach profile data acquisition at a cost of $17,357. Annual 2020 beach profile data analysis and report at a cost of $18,039. And inter-agency coordination and Bohm geological and geophysical permitting at a cost of $12,202.50. I've had numerous conversations with Ken Wilson over the past month or so, um, regarding this and, um, other aspects of beach nourishment and spoke with him again today and confirmed that the data analysis and report task in his proposal would not be undertaken prior to June 30th. So we are withdrawing that part of the budget amendment request. The beach profile data acquisition will be done by June 30th and the $17,000, $17,357 can be covered by the funds remaining in the current budget in the beach profile study line. Um, $45,000 was budgeted this current fiscal year and $26,000 has been spent. Uh, that was used to cover the beach profile monitoring analysis and report conducted last fall, as well as the change order to cover the update to the town's beach management plan to update the goals and project option, project options that include the entire beach. The inter-agency coordination and Bohm geological and geophysical permitting cost is our share, 25% of the total cost for CPE NC to move forward with initial permitting for a 2022 beach nourishment project with Duck, Kitty Hawk and Kill Double Hills. Scoping meeting was held on April 29th with CPE NC, representatives from the three towns, Dare County, and numerous representatives from state and federal agencies. Um, should council wish to move forward with the inter-agency coordination and permitting, we recommend a budget amendment for the $12,203 to be added to a new line item in the budget called beach nourishment permitting. Y'all have any questions on that?
So what's the total cost of the budget amendment?
$12,200, $12,203.
That, that's the total that we're asked to?
As of right, tonight, our request is $12,203.
Versus the 40, 47.
Correct.
So the 17 is picked up. It's already in the budget. The 18 won't occur in this fiscal year.
Correct.
And the 12 is our participation in the permitting.
That's right.
And we have to participate for the Pelican Watch project, correct?
I'm sorry, we don't, what was the last part?
Do we have to participate for the Pelican Watch project?
Um, theoretically, if y'all didn't do, if we didn't move forward with an option four and we did the maintenance in Kitty Hawk, I mean, at Pelican Watch, there's a possibility we could get the funding from the grant application. There's a possibility we could get, uh, funding from the Dorian or, um, storm damage reimbursement. Does that answer your question?
We, we would still have to participate in the inter-agency coordination that we.
Yeah, we, I imagine that we probably would still have to, you know, pay our shared costs for that part of it, even though it would be on a smaller scale. The product, the prices might, it would probably be, it would probably change. Yeah, but, um, yeah, we would still have a cost to share in that.
And he indicated that, you know, if one of the municipalities doesn't, say, didn't participate.
Then the cost.
Then that price, the price goes up.
According to recent meetings, we've had, uh, manager meetings with CPE NC, um, it sounds like all three of the towns, Duck, Kitty Hawk, Kill Double Hills are moving forward with their 2022 projects. At least the managers are saying they are.
And I'm hearing the same thing from, from the mayor's side of it as well. They're, they're ready to move forward.
So this has changed, uh, you know, as the days have gone by. So tonight, um, bottom line, what we're requesting, if y'all want to move forward with the inter-agency coordinating and permitting, the budget amendment would be $12,203 and create a new line in the budget for beach nourishment permitting.
Yeah, I agree with that. So we can track it.
And that, exactly. And later on, we move forward. As I think I reported at the beach work set, uh, budget work session, um, they're going to be submitting a proposal to us soon for permitting and design for a 2022 project. Uh, the estimate for that would be around 450,000. Um, and there, as you know, Dare County has agreed, they said that they would give, you know, they would be willing to give up to 250, um, for permitting and design. So, um, we'll be coming to y'all. Once we receive that proposal, we'll be presenting it to you all.
Do we know the length of time it will take to get, say, approval of that item three or task three, the inter-agency coordination? Cause those, apparently, if I remember correctly, there's probably a large number of agencies involved with that.
Yeah. I mean, this is the, based on my understanding of it, um, this is the initial inter-agency coordinating and permitting. The coordinating aspect of it is so that everyone is aware of the project and concerns and comments are given well ahead of time so that when they do start permitting in the actual design of a project, they have already had conversations with these agencies in order to make it move faster. Um, but I don't know the exact, I mean, the permitting and design will probably go, um, well into the fall, maybe even winter, um, of this year.
The 450,000, when are we going to have to address that?
Uh, that question I think came up with the budget work session, I think Council, um, Mayor Proton, we asked about that. And, um, I believe, I had one conversation with the county manager and, uh, he said, at that time, he said that he thinks that we could use the 250,000 for that purpose. Then I asked Ken Wilson, I said, well, if your proposal was 450,000 and we use the 250,000 that the county has agreed to let us use, how far along would that get us in the permitting and design process until the money would run out? And then he indicated that that would be July, maybe August.
Oh.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
So this is kind of analogous to either myself or Matt coming in and talking to a planning department to find out, to coordinate before we actually apply for a permit.
Correct. Like the, the scoping meeting that we have, there were representatives from the Corps of Engineers, Bohm, Fish and Wildlife, Marine Fisheries, KAMA, um, Coastal Management. I mean, it was, it was a, it was a.
That's what we would find out in all these meetings or.
Yeah, and they, and each agency provided comments on things, on things such, you know, things for them to consider as they move forward with their.
That's the, that's the same cast that, that when we were working with the Pelican, Tom, if you remember correctly, you and I and, uh, I believe Gary, we went over to Little Washington and for a two hour meeting of all that group.
Right. It was similar to the, to the dredge project with 15 agencies having to approve what you wanted to do. Very similar type thing. It didn't cost as much, but it was similar.
But depending on which way the wind was blowing with them.
It also looks like it's, it's specifically looking for a new sand area.
The, there are borrow dive, the, the Bohm Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, um, that that's referring to borrow, borrow area dive investigations. There are currently, um, two available borrow sites, one that was used for the previous project. And then that's near Kill Double Hills. And there's another one that's kind of off of Duck that's closer that I don't think has been used. But there are, they're, what they're talking about is doing other dive investigations to see if there are other sand sources somewhere else that could be used that would help with cost.
Is the wildlife route involved because, you know, it's a time of year for turtle nesting?
Well, during the scoping meeting, the turtle, uh, you know, as you know, there's a, um, uh, boat that goes out ahead of the actual dredge that tries to catch the turtle and they replace turtles. And I don't remember the exact number that was done during the projects that were done in 2017. Um, but, um, they were involved and, you know, they, 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 they commented. Um, one thing that wasn't interesting in there is I think two of the agencies said that, as you recall, all the, the beach nourishment projects that have occurred here in Dare County, they've all been, they've all been done in the summer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Nax Edge have been done in the summer and the last round with the other town was in Pelican Watch was done in the summer. Two of those agencies said that that was a one time thing for these projects up on this side of the beach and that the, that they're not going to allow it in summer and it would have to take place in the winter. So that affects timeline, of course, but that's, that, that was where the comments received. I haven't heard any.
I thought that was because of the turtle nesting and, um, when would they allow it then?
It would be during the winter.
During the winter months, not the spring.
Okay.
That's what's, uh, just to speak up from a little bit of history, that's what's pretty much precluded it from ever happening historically. Cause it was, it was the, the desire to do it in the summer months because the dredgers couldn't do it in the winter months.
Yeah. And because of water and, and the delay, you know, be a longer timeframe to, to accomplish what they're wanting to do, you know, have a nor'easter hang around for four or five days and then bounce around out there in that dredge. I don't know if that'd be too pleasant.
Right. So unless y'all have any other questions, that's, that's the request.
So you need, you need our approval to, um, to make a budget amendment of $12,203?
If that's what y'all would like to do, yes, sir.
I need a, I need a motion to.
A new line item.
And that, that money would be added to a new line item, uh, beach nourishment permitting.
Any further questions about the council, council, who want to have it, have it, Sheila, read it back to us?
Yeah, we have.
Unless Tom's made the motion.
But I didn't mention $203 and the new line item.
Beach nourishment.
Of beach nourishment permitting.
Okay.
I'm sorry. What'd you say, Sheila? For the?
No one has made a motion yet, but it would be for a budget amendment and the $12,203 and the new line item, um, of each nerd's permitting placed in the.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Leo. Any further discussion? If, if I had a sort of vote on the motion, we start with you, Matt.
Uh, I, I had a little bit of discussion.
Okay.
That we, we need to have a meeting about moving forward with beach nourishment or not, uh, soon. Cause we keep paying things that we need to make a decision as a council if we're going to do this and, and not just keeping, and, and I mean, I understand 12,000, Pelican's watch is already on the table, but I think we, we were going down that train prior to the COVID-19 and we got derailed a little bit, but I think our next series of meetings needs to really, that needs to be the core of the discussion so that we can, we can have a formal vote to either move forward or not. And so we, we don't keep, I mean, we're going to get a $450,000 bill. I don't, I don't, I'd rather stop piecemealing it like this if possible.
I agree with you 100%. In fact, that's why I've asked for some kind of timeline before so that we can get these ducks lined up so that we can decide. But you're spot on, man.
We're on the cusp of potentially, wh- what do you think on our, on our next meeting schedule? I mean, we have, we have the workshop.
There's, there's the, the workshop on May 19th. I think that would be a good time to do it. We've provided y'all with the, um, proposed MSD numbers. We've provided y'all with the information you've requested. I think you have everything y'all have asked for of us to make a decision. If there's anything else you would like from us to help you make a decision, we'd be glad to provide it. But I have to say that I agree with you. It would be very helpful, um, if we knew whether or not this council wants to proceed with it and we can stop.
Yeah, we need to put the goal out there and work towards it.
In our, in our defense, I think some of the concern was we wanted to have the ability to have public feedback in public forum. And with COVID-19, that's been, that, that really disrupted that entire process. Um, if we have a very serious discussion about it, our next workshop meeting, and then in June, potentially, I'm not, I don't think we're going to be filling this room with 60 people or a hundred people. That's probably not going to happen, but we need to be thinking about how to incorporate public dialogue and then we make our decision. I mean, what, what, I'm, I'm spitballing. So tell me if that's stupid.
No, actually, I've been thinking about the same thing. Um, I even mentioned it to, uh, Tom in a conversation at some point in the last week.
Yep.
Um, the, for sure, the opportunity for the public to let us know what they think. Um, and, but how do you do it? And I don't know. I don't know how we do it.
Maybe we have a good, solid meeting discussion about this and we, we come up with our concerns and how we feel. And then the public is, we solicit public comment through a period of time, maybe two weeks to be written in and we talk to our constituencies ourselves. And then when we come back for a meeting where we will, we will have a, a vote. I mean, is that, is that a reasonable process? Is that?
Sure. You, you could, at, at, at any of the meetings, you know, not sure what, you know, the circumstances will be as far as gatherings, number of people in a gathering. But if, if, if we could, you could hold a public hearing, um, receive input in, you know, in a meeting setting.
Is there any appetite for a, a digital town hall? Do we have the capability for that?
We could do something similar to this.
Just like we got here.
Folks would have to, only thing is they'd be limited to electronic participation or they would have to come in, you know, no more than 10 at a time.
Yeah, they'd have to circulate.
We also have the recent statute passed about electronic meetings and public participation and what can we do legally and?
Yeah. And I think if y'all are all going to be here, you don't have to have the electronic, but you can.
No, just for the public part, the actual public, like a public hearing or a public forum, public participation. Does the new statute address that?
I mean, it, it, it really only applies, it, it's thinking more about the members taking action. I don't think it has anything in there. I mean, it does have something about the public when they are speaking, if, you know, if they're allowed to speak for a public, you have to be able to hear, you know, technology wise, you have to be able to hear them. Y'all have already got that. Um, but it doesn't, it doesn't change your requirements to have a public comment period associated with at least one regular meeting if you have one scheduled during the month. Um, and that sort of thing. So you, you could, you could have any kind of public input you want. I mean, you could have a meeting like this where you allow people to come in or you allow them to, to talk through some other means if you wanted to. Um, I mean, this isn't something that has a statutory public hearing process associated with it. It's, it's whatever way you want to get input.
Yeah. You know, that's what we can do is gather and input to help us decide basically what the residents are thinking.
And then if one of you is attending electronically and is voting or becoming or then it kicks in, multiple or part of the quorum requirements, then it kicks in and, and then, uh, but even then it doesn't address the issue that you're talking about. I, I think it would allow it and, uh, but, but I think it's allowed anyway. What, what is currently set up for a workshop agenda?
I'm sorry, Matt.
I said, I was.
May workshop?
May 18th, May 19th.
May 19th workshop.
It'd be good to have it devoted just to this sole subject if possible.
And then the next one.
Well, I would propose and please shoot it down or offer an alternative, but that we, we devote the 19th to a beach nourishment workshop. We, our, our discussion, our, the public will hear and, and we'll have a public comment, um, period during that. And then we solicit public comment over a two week period, um, prior to our June meeting.
That's June 1st.
Our June 1st meeting, the agenda would be adoption of the budget and.
Flood and, and then flood maps and, um, code updating.
So then, so then maybe the period should be four weeks and then our workshop in June.
Are you getting down to June 16th?
Is that a motion then?
No, I'm just, I'm still discussing.
I, I think it's a good idea just to vote that meeting to that sole subject. But I'd like to ask, well, I guess everybody in the room, where's the special obligation bond factors?
I haven't read the bill, but it was inserted into the language and I, I thought it was in the final document.
We, we were, we received notification that it has, that it's been reinserted and that it's, it's done.
Oh, it is done then. Okay. So we have that authority again. Well, that simplifies things a little.
That's, that's a critical step, but let's go back. That's a critical step, but let's go back, just go back a step or two to my benefit and everybody else too, I think. We want to get the public's opinions about this, no question about that. We want to get, the mayor may not be on, on the side of doing a project, but we need to know what they really want us to do. And then we've got to decide among ourselves whether we follow that leader, we look at our condition of our beaches and say, well, you know, the imperative here is the beach itself. Now, that's the kind of conversation we need to have, I think, at our next meeting or the one you talked about having in...
I think the necessity of it should be the topic and then that we should have some discussion about tax rates for the MSDs.
Do we do a poll of some sort, a survey? In other words, how do we get there with the public? How do we get them involved to the level where we can know what their thoughts really are?
I would just like to suggest maybe, could we task the staff with coming up with some ideas about how to get public comment? Is it, is it as simple as a Survey Monkey? Or could we just do maybe a grocery list of different things?
I think we could do a list of things.
So if, if, if y'all could make some proposals about how we do that and bring it to the meeting on the?
May.
May 19th.
8/19.
The mayor can, can, y'all can set the agenda for May 19th, but we'll, we'll make sure that that's on there, beach nourishment. Public comment, funding. Sorry, I'm done.
I've also wondered if, I mean, we could put the word out and have probably 50 to 100 emails on this subject, liquidly split. And I'm wondering if, if an email is addressed to all council with a specific subject line of public comments, would that be acceptable as public input on this?
Y'all have been receiving emails from Sheila that go to the info@southernshores-nc dot com email address. I'm sure that number is... Yeah, that over the, over the past year or two, year, two years, it's, it's only 65? She forwards all those emails, those emails that comes into the info, but we'll, we'll have an option for y'all at the May 19th meeting.
Yeah, because obviously we're going to try to be proactive to try to get as many of the public to participate in letting us know what they think as possible. So we would do some sort of push to try to get people to tell us what they think.
Yes, ma'am.
That ends my discussion for the motion. Make sure if we're, if I'm going to spend some money, that we have a next time deal.
And that we can't put off this vote to the 18th of May, correct?
I've been told, no, no, I've been told that this needs to be done as soon as possible.
It's time for us to make a decision about permitting money. Okay.
And some of it is in support of a project that's already in action so that alleviates some of my concern that we're moving without making a decision.
I can say this, if, if you would like to take the physical vote on the 19th, you can because we adopt our budgets by departments, not by line item. With that said, there is the extra money in there in the FY 1920 CIIP line that, I mean, we could use. We do not adopt by line item, we adopt by the department. So the money is in that Streets Department to pay for this. You know, if we go ahead and tell, you know, decide we want to do that and if you decide you want to, but I guess what, the decision part has to be made if you want to do it. But as far as doing the budget amendment, you don't have to do the budget amendment tonight, you can do it on the 19th.
Yeah, it's, it's more about the decision part than the mechanics part. Yeah.
I'm okay moving forward with if, if you want to go ahead and vote.
Yeah. I'd like to get that, this part behind this and we can...
You're talking about the $12,203?
We've already got a motion.
We have a motion out there. It's been discussed, I think.
It's time to, time to vote.
I was on the roll call when I delayed it.
We started on you. You didn't answer me though. So let's, let's go back and start again. All in favor of the, of the budget amendment as it's been reduced at $12,203, we indicate by saying aye, Matt? You want to start with?
Aye.
Leo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye for me. So that motion's been made and carried. Excited of business, let me see where we are in the agenda here, guys.
Second General Public.
Any public comment signups? Can you bring her up?
Chat.
Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, everybody. Ann Scherzmo, 69 Hickory Trail. Matt stole my thunder, I'm afraid. I was going to jump right in there and ask why you were kicking the beach nourishment football down the field again, punting, as it were, and avoiding a vote on the option. But, so I'm very pleased that you've decided to put it on your May 19th agenda. As far as that's concerned, it seems to me that public can line up outside the pit center and come in one at a time as long as they're six feet apart from one another. There shouldn't be a problem with commenting in that way. And in fact, I was thinking about doing that myself tonight, but I got waylaid by the governor who spoke at 5 o'clock and we're going into phase one as of Friday at 5 o'clock. I also would like to say congratulations to Wes for negotiating so far the recycling contract with RDS. I think that's a step in the right direction. I'm glad to see that Ben is involved as well. I had some contact with a recycling specialist at NCDQ and she told me that 12% was much too low a threshold, that 14 to 15% is the average. And if RDS is now saying 18%, you've made great strides there. So congratulations. It looks to me like that's going to work out and we'll actually be doing real recycling again in Southern Shores. So as I said, Matt stole my thunder. I was going to say, let's vote on this already. I think the bigger issue is going to be down the road if you go the special obligation bond route when you get into the public hearing about the municipal service districts and if we're still going to be restricted in terms of meeting in a gathering of 10 people. But thank you all, I appreciate your time. Take care.
Thank you, Ann. Anyone else? Sheila? No problem?
She said no one else, Mr. Mary?
Nope. Anyone else to speak? We closed public comment, thank you. We're down to number seven, folks, of the business. I just have a quick comment I'd like to make and I'll pass it around the room here to Elizabeth next. I want to thank everyone who contributed to making the walking paths on East and South Dogwood a reality. There were lots of folks involved in that. It took a lot of effort and a lot of, a lot of pushing from the members of the community as well as members of staff and council. And it turned into a reality and it's wonderful that it did. Both of these paths on, on South Dogwood and East Dogwood have been warmly received and are being used pretty heavily, as a matter of fact. In fact, I've had a number of emails about them, all of them positive, especially the South Dogwood path, which is a little more, a little more, a little more length to use and a little more easier to use, I guess. Recently, a longtime resident of South Dogwood Trail told me how much she enjoyed seeing people of all ages using the walkway. She said it brought a feeling to her of finally being part of a neighborhood instead of just a cut-through street. So she expressed it very well, I thought. I think most of you heard the same thing or seen the same thing from, from emails. So I just want to thank those people who made it all possible. That's all I have, thank you. Elizabeth?
I don't have any comment.
Jim?
Yes, I'd like to read a statement that I wrote out before, for this meeting. I would, before I start reading it though, I'd like to mention that I wrote this thing. I've had one suggestion from the mayor to change one word and other than that, it's all mine except for my wife's editing. Thank God for my wife's better grasp of grammar than mine. But anyway, the statement reads similar to what Mr. Bennett just said. "The final concrete pours for the South Dogwood Trail Walkway took place last week. With the exception of fine grading, seeding, and a few other final tasks, this walkway is complete. Generations present and future will enjoy this safer connection between our neighborhoods with Kitty Hawk Elementary School, the SSCA Beach Access on Ocean Boulevard, the multi-use pass along NC 12 and the Woods Road in Kitty Hawk, the Country Club, and other recreational opportunities both within and outside the town limits of Southern Shores, the walkways along East and South Dogwood. In addition to a new fire station, the search for a new town manager, planning for a potential beach renovation project, multiple road improvement projects, storm drainage improvements, and zoning tax amendments will all serve to keep Southern Shores a great place to live. Our town staff is arguably the most well-trained, professional, and dedicated we've had in Southern Shores. Volunteers on the Planning Board, Historic Landmark Committee, Capital Improvements and Infrastructure Planning Committee, the Fire Department, and others give selfishly their time, their thoughts, and efforts to improve our town, maintain its unique character and appeal, and make Southern Shores a place we're all proud to call home. Countless other volunteers add tremendously to our town. The SSCA and CPOA are the de facto Parks Department. Their ongoing improvements provide recreational opportunities for all ages. Our marinas, picnic shelters, playgrounds, walkways, beach accesses, and other facilities are planned and developed by volunteers. The volunteerism in Southern Shores is our life's blood. It draws us together to implement long-lasting improvements and to celebrate with great food and fellowship. There are many ways to keep up to date on news, events, projects, and developments in Southern Shores. The town's web, website, its Facebook page, and newsletter report this information and many meetings like this one are videotaped for viewing via the town's website. This site also lists means of contacting council members or town staff. The amenities and positive efforts that staff and volunteers in Southern Shores deserve to be appreciated and celebrated. Of course, even the best entities have room for improvement, which is why positive efforts are ongoing. It seems unfortunate that a few citizens find little to appreciate and much to criticize. Everyone is entitled to his or her opinion and free speech to express it, but constant and exclusive negativity, false, occasional false information and mean-spirited approaches are counterproductive. Southern Shores can accommodate different opinions and disagreements and wants every citizen's voice to be heard, but ultimately, we are best served by a spirit of mutual problem-solving regardless of our starting point and working together for good. We invite everyone in town to participate in these efforts that enrich us to all. Thank you to everyone."
Thank you, Jim.
I just got a couple things. Doors and Board, you may have seen their slogan surround. As a matter of fact, I see Mike's got part of it over here on his sign, I noticed. And that is, "Don't get hung up on the summer of the glove." That's a play of words. The main thing is, the rest of that is to be safe, be smart, and have fun. And that's the message that they want to get in there and working with the local businesses. There'll be a logo if they agree to make sure the place is safe, clean, handle all the distancing and whatever's required in these various phases. And it'll be, you'll see the logo, it'll be a decal that they can put on their doors and use. We use, customers can see that they're committed to try to make the place safe. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Leo. Matt?
I don't have any comment.
Thank you. It's time I would make a motion to go into closed session. I guess just go ahead and go into closed session, right? Thank you. We will, we will do that.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.